Welcome, everybody, to our Thursday, April 6th Regular Commission Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. And if you'll please join us as Jennifer leads us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us begin this meeting by taking a brief moment of silence and reflection on our service to this community. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer won. That's okay.
Okay.
I didn't say it the other way.
Now, we'll move on to our presentations, and the first item is our National Tartan Day Proclamation. I'll turn that over to Commissioner Gow.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Tartan Day. Alan, would you please come forward? Let me read this to you, pass it to you, and then give you the microphone.
Thank you very much.
National Tartan Day. Whereas National Tartan Day was declared by the U.S. Senate Resolution 144 to honor the role that Scottish Americans play in the founding of our nation. America's ties to Scotland are great. Almost half were the signers of the American Declaration of Independence, which was based on Scotland's 1913/20 Declaration of Arrogance, and 34 of the 45 U.S. Presidents have been of Scottish descent. And whereas Florida has a rich history of Scottish influence, as reflected in its culture and in the names of its many counties, towns, and cities, including Dunedin, which was founded by two Scotsmen, J.O. Douglas and James Somerville. And whereas Florida was the home of some famous Scottish descendant residents, such as Thomas Edison, Ernest Hemingway, Henry Flagler, Andrew Carnegie, and Seminole Indian Chief Osceola. And whereas we celebrate the spirit and character of Scottish Americans and recognize their many contributions to our culture and way of life, and strive to promote Scottish traditions internationally through their sister-city relationship with sterling Scotland. And whereas Dunedin encourages its youth to embrace Scottish traditions through the art of Highland dance and the music of pipes and drums in their middle school and high school pipe bands. And whereas no fewer than 10 Highland games and Celtic festivals are held each year throughout the state, including Dunedin, where people from all over the world attend. And whereas we commend the organizations in Dunedin who honor Scottish heritage traditions and cultures, such as the Scottish American Society, Scottish American Military Society, the Dunedin Scottish Arts Foundation, and the New World Celts. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gow, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the Mayor of the City of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 6, 2023, as National Tartan Day in Dunedin, and urge our citizens to observe this holiday by celebrating the continued friendship between the people of Scotland and the United States, and recognize the contributions of Scottish Americans to our nation, the state of Florida, and the city of Dunedin.
Yay.
Well, as you can see, for once, I have no notes with me, so I'm going to have to ad lib it. It's a time of fantastic celebration for all Scots in Dunedin at this time of the year, all Scots-Americans like myself, proud to be an American citizen, but also proud of my Scottish ancestry, in spite of what ancestry.com said. Yeah, so, as I say, it's a great time of celebration. And how are we celebrating this week? Well, not only is it National Tartan Day today, but this year is the 40th anniversary of the incorporation of the Scottish American Society as a 501(c)(3) organization. So we're celebrating 40 years. We also found a document. We were cleaning out our hall, the Scottish Cultural Center, a couple of months ago, and we found a document that refers to our building from 1923. Now, when this, when our building was designated a historic landmark in Dunedin, it was qualified from 1940, but this document means that the building is 100 years old this year, so something else to celebrate. Now, the Scots don't need an awful lot of excuses to celebrate, but we'll take them anyway. So how we're celebrating is by, quite frankly, without hyperbole and without exaggeration, we have the best Celtic band in the world in Dunedin tonight. And they're not here for tonight, they're here for three days. How do I know they're the best band? Because the people who support Celtic music voted on that in December last year. And the band's called Scary Boar. They're eight charming guys, all much better-looking than me, and they're here for three nights. And why are they here? Because, quite simply, they love Dunedin. They've come here for a break, they're here for five days, and they're going to do three shows for us. So they're in the hall tonight, we've just finished our sound check, and my ears are still ringing. They're going to do, they're doing a whiskey tasting for us tomorrow night, which should be a lot of fun, and then our big bash on Saturday at Weaver Park. That's with one of the best bands out of Ireland as well, the Byrne Brothers, and they're being supplemented by the Isle of Skye dancers and our newest pipe band, Suncoast United Pipe Band. So fantastic talent, looks like the weather's going to behave, and I think it'll be a fantastic week. So thank you for recognizing Tartan Day. It's very important to all Scots in the country, and that the country recognizes what we've done to help build this fantastic nation. So thank you to you. Hopefully, we'll see you at least between now and Saturday, and come and enjoy some of the fun. Before I leave, a big thank you to Vince and Jory and the staff, because as always, they make life so much easier for people like me who are organizing events. They take most of the load off of us, they point us in the right direction, and they take away a lot of the stress. So a big thank you to them. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, and our next recognition is the recognition of the 2023 National Public Works Week, and I will turn that over to Commissioner Franny.
Sounds good. I guess Jorge and...
Yep.
Okay, all coming up. So before I start, I just want to say, when you listen to this, those who are watching, I think it's important, there's so many things involved, it has to do with water supply, and water treatment, and solid waste, and stormwater, all the things, I think, when you think of, you know, why government was created to begin with, things that we could do together that would be hard for individuals to do separately. So you bring them together to try to solve big issues that would be huge problems for communities if you didn't do it together. So these are, this is big stuff, which makes National Public Works Week a big deal. So National Public Works Week, May 21st to 27th, 2023, Connecting the World Through Public Works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, the natural environment, and well-being of the people of the city of Dunedin. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, stormwater, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, fleet and equipment, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Dunedin to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore, I'm Maureen Mo-Franny, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Mayor of the City of Dunedin, Florida, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, to hereby designate May 21st to the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm actually here trying to represent two fine ladies with Bill and Keith. Sue Bartlett, our Public Works Director, is actually up in near Thomasville, Georgia right now, helping her daughter, who is about to give birth to their second granddaughter.
Oh, wow. Nice.
She's up there, I think she's watching, so...
Congratulations, Sue.
That's great.
...mess that up. And then I also wanted to let the Commission know that, starting Monday, we have a new Utilities Director, Nan Bennett, will be starting with the city. So between the both of them, I'm hoping that they can help offload some of the stuff I've been carrying, and so that we can be more responsive to these fine folks. But, so, a couple of things that I wanted to...
Jorge, can you tune your microphone on?
Did, did I? Do it. I did it in the opposite direction, sorry.
Can you start again? Yeah, research.
I gotta start again? All right. Susan, Georgia, and Nan, starting on Monday. So Keith gave me a couple of tidbits here, and he wanted me to remind everybody. So Public Works and Utilities consists of about 153 FTEs. We're responsible for 130 miles of roadway, 32 miles of sidewalks, about 140 miles of sanitary sewer gravity, 17 miles of forest main, 3,100 manholes, 56 miles of sewer laterals, and 42 lift stations throughout the city. So during National Public Works Week, we've talked to Jennifer, and she's given staff the okay, we're going to have a Public Works rodeo that's actually going to occur on May 24th. It's Wednesday, from 8:00 to 8:00 in the morning till 3:00 p.m. at Highlander, right? And there's going to be a bunch of different events, and I think you guys have some of those. We challenge you to come out. We have the Backhoe Five Cone Tennis Ball Retrieval.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of these that, I know you're going to want to do some of these. There's one that involves racing a skid steer afterwards, if you can manage it not to, you know.
Come watch.
So this should be good. And then we'll actually have lunch for all the staff, and we'd love for all you all to join us, including our constitutional officers as well. So thanks, everybody, for the acknowledgement, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Parks and Recreation had a video, but anyway.
Because, you know, starts in parks.
Guys, do great.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Now it's time for citizen input. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda, please feel free to do so. Come on down. Give us your name and address for the record, and the clock's above my head, you'll get three minutes.
My name is John Gaddoo. I live at 1426 Alamo Lane in Dunedin. If time permits, and it looks like it might tonight on the agenda, would you please give us an update on the status of the Coke plant, to include what's been done to date? How will this move forward? Will the property remain commercially zoned? And what is the timeline? I still see trucks driving in and out daily. I don't know if they're moving equipment, or if they're moving product, so just a little update would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda? Okay. Jennifer, you want to give an update?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, John. Very interesting question. We have been in communication with Coca-Cola on a regular basis. The, and actually, your question is very timely, because unfortunately, the general manager of the Coca-Cola plant passed away. She was a woman that we met just last year. She had worked there for, I think, maybe 20...
Twenty-some years, a long time.
Twenty, yes, and she was only 57, so that's very unfortunate, yeah. And our prayers, our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the Coca-Cola Corporation, and also, unfortunately, the, their real estate manager also passed away, who was the person that we were dealing with. Yeah, we would have Zoom calls, and we had those two on the call, with the mayor, myself, and Bob Ironsmith, and it's just so, you know, unfortunate for Coca-Cola. Sarvee is, I forget his last name, I'm sorry, he is the, one of the vice presidents that we've been talking to on a regular basis. He's going to let us know who they're going to appoint in their positions, and who we're going to be talking to in the future. Coca-Cola has actually been very accommodating in their communications with us, and very open. They have opened up their plant on Peace River, it is operating at capacity, actually. So they had need for additional capacity in their manufacturing, and that is in Dunedin. And so they will not be leaving or vacating that premises until at least, I think it was May or spring of 2024. Yes, so most likely a year from now. They, Coca-Cola will then, before they do anything with the property, they will sell all of their equipment. And obviously, best offer they're going to take for all their equipment inside the factory, and then they will decide what they're going to do with the building itself. Even, they won't even let folks walk through it. So at that point, I know that they are going to put it on the market, and as I said, there's nothing that we can do. We've had plenty of conversations with them, as far as getting in and helping them market it, they're going to do it themselves. And so they, we have been talking to them a great deal, though, about the use of the property. And we had Urban Land Institute come, review the property, review the size of the property, the location of the property, some of the issues with the condition of the property, and make recommendations as far as the highest and best use of the property moving forward. Kent Owens, the gentleman that we're talking to, unfortunately passed away, agreed that, given our long partnership with Coca-Cola, that they are willing to work with us to find the highest and best use of the property, and not sell it for storage or anything like that. There are some issues with the property, obviously access is a big, is a big problem for a industrial use, you're driving through neighborhoods, and that's, you know, with some of their semis, that's going to be a problem, and also the proximity to the coast. A lot of the manufacturers are not interested in being that close to the coast anymore, because they would have interruptions in their operations when there are storms, unfortunately. Urban Land Institute informed us that the highest and best use is some sort of a mixed-use housing, if you will, affordable housing, that would support biomedical, pharmaceutical, or any other type of a use on the property, a targeted industry type on the property. And so the county previously took the position that they would not allow any sort of a land use change on their county plan, because there's a county land use and a city land use that would be anything other than industrial. They've kind of stepped back from that. I think the mayor knows a lot, quite a bit about that from Ford Pinellas, and actually the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council weighed in on that as well. Now they are looking at mixed use with an industrial component on the property as well. So lots, lots going on in there. I assure you, we have our finger on that pulse, and we're watching it very, very closely. And as I said, we're very grateful that Coca-Cola has committed to work with us on the future use of that property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question.
Sure. We were going to look at some code changes, though, early enough in this game, and I assume that's kind of on your radar. Yes, it is, absolutely. We were going to do them sooner rather than later, so it didn't collide. Okay, thank you. Actually, I'm sorry, Mayor, those code changes, some of those issues, could be addressed through land use changes and doing mixed use. Yeah, no, I agree. I think we were on that premise that we couldn't do it, so you're right. Exactly. You could take care of it. I agree. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our action items. We have the Dunedin Golf Club Course Maintenance Service Contract. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. City Commissioners Vince Giszi, Parks and Recreation Director, and with me is Blair Klein, our new Golf Club General Manager. And yes, he is still new, he's been with us about two months now. Also here this evening are members from Down to Earth, who are recommending a war tonight for the maintenance contract. We have Bill Kissler, who's the Business Development Manager. Also, Chris Ansley is the Superintendent, who'll be on site with us, and has been there for about two years, working with the Dunedin Golf Club. Justin Martinjack is also the Regional Superintendent for Down to Earth, and all three of them are here this evening. So again, this is another step in the direction of the city's taking on the operation of the Dunedin Golf Club. As part of our transition plan, the city will be assuming the oversight and management of the Dunedin Golf Club effective June 26, 2023. One aspect of our transition plan is to contract the services to maintain the grounds of the Dunedin Golf Course. On January 27, 2023, the city issued a bid for Dunedin Golf Course Maintenance Services. The bid solicited the services of a contractor qualified to maintain the Dunedin Golf Course and other common areas of the highest quality of maintenance possible within the specified parameters. The scope of service include maintenance of greens, tees, fairways, ruffs, practice range, landscaped areas, trees, irrigation, bunkers, and ponds. Duties include mowing, aeration, fertilization, top dressing, weed control, cup changing, proper spacing of tee markers, leveling of tees, grooming, et cetera. The contractor shall be responsible for all labor, equipment, and materials necessary to provide a turnkey operation required to complete this work. The bid specifications include the required minimum staffing levels of 10 FTEs, including a superintendent, supervisor mechanic, irrigation technician, spray technician, and laborers. The current agreement for the Golf Course Maintenance with Dunedin Country Club, Inc. expires on June 30, 2023, subject to commission approval. The initial contract term with Down to Earth shall commence on July 1, 2023, for a period of three years, with the option of two additional one-year periods. Three bids were received. Down to Earth of Maitland, Florida submitted the lowest bid, meaning specifications, at The bids were separated into two line items, including monthly services and drawing course restoration. The monthly cost through restoration is $56,250 per month, estimated for 16 months, which would be July 1, 2023, through October 31, 2024, right through the, right up until the construction. And then the $73,335 after restoration, estimated 20 months, November 1, 2024, once construction is completed, or restoration is completed, through June 30, 2026. DTE is the current contractor at the Dunedin Golf Club, providing services through an agreement with the club. The current agreement with the Dunedin Golf Club is for $53,114 monthly. However, it does not include a maintenance equipment, while the new agreement will also include necessary equipment. The Dunedin Golf Club pays an additional $8,600 a month for turf package, for a total of $61,722 a month. The city may terminate this agreement without cause and without penalty or expense. To the city, upon 90 days' written notice to the contractor, DTE received all favorable reference checks. Blair did, actually did the reference checks. As such, staff recommends the Dunedin Golf Course Maintenance Service Contract to Down to Earth of Maitland, Florida, in the amount of $2,367,710. And once the contract with the city begins on July 1, Blair, our General Manager, will be overseeing the full maintenance services during, before drawing, and after restoration and beyond. So Blair, did you want to add anything to that presentation?
Well, I think Vince pretty well covered it, but I, not only did I call the references, I visited two sites personally, just to make sure that what I was seeing, and I have no problems recommending Down to Earth. I spoke with their Vice President of Golf, I believe it was Tuesday of this week, he and I had a meeting in my office, and we're on the same page, and it's full speed ahead. I have every confidence they can deliver what he promised. And that'll be great for the city, and great for the residents and the people that play there, and for the current members.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll take any questions.
As our liaison, did you have anything you wanted to add, or ask, or...
No, I just make a comment as a liaison. I know that the current board was actively involved in this, and was very pleased with what they were hearing. And I've had the opportunity to listen to those two gentlemen several times now, and so I think, I think that they're all pretty happy about this, and I know Blair was as well. So I felt comfortable with that recommendation at that time. So here it is before us today, and I saw no one having any, any questions, any particular questions or issues, other than being in, shall I say, compliance, or hopeful with the selection of this team.
Okay. Jeff, anything?
No questions, no.
Any questions over here?
No, other than to reiterate, Blair, when you said, "I have no problem with recommending", I just always liked that. So this would have been your choice, free and clear, independently?
Of the ones that were, the bids that were returned?
Right.
I didn't, I didn't vet any of the other bids at all, just, just this one, this was the little bid. And no, everything was up and up, and...
You feel good about it.
I feel very good about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody wish to come forward and speak to this from the public? Uh huh. Give us your name and address for the record.
Still the same. John Gaddoo, 1426 Alamo Lane. I just have a simple question, or two questions. One, if the club is profitable, and if it is, where do the profits go?
Okay, we'll address that later, because that's not a part of this particular subject. Okay, anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Walker and Vice Mayor Chouanga. Any final comments from anyone? No? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any profits from the club go back into their fund to support capital improvements? All right, we have the proposed, thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, can I just make one comment? Leeny Sheets is in here this evening, she's dealing with a family emergency in South Florida, but I want to say that she did a lot of work putting this bid spec together in a short period of time, so that we can make our deadline and be under construction, or be under our management by the end of June. I just really wanted to give her, because she did spend a lot of time writing this and putting out this bid package, her as well as Chuck from purchasing. So thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have the proposed agenda for April 20. There is a request to add a Harvard Jolly contract onto this particular agenda, which doesn't seem to be a problem. Anybody else have anything else to add, or... Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Walker. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I didn't get any emails, we'll just go over the things that we missed on Tuesday, and I didn't see anybody send an email in commission discussion. Is there a clerk's update? No. Okay, city manager update?
None, Mayor.
How about our ribbon cutting?
Oh, well, yeah, there's that.
Don't know yet.
Actually, no, we did have a very good OAC meeting, Owner Architect Contractor meeting today. I sat in, I normally don't sit in on those, so we are zeroing in, we're getting really, really close, and so I'm going to send a hold on your calendars the next couple, couple weeks. There's one thing, we still need that ADA elevator. It's going to be delivered in the next couple of days.
Okay, very good. Thank you. City Attorney, anything from the City Attorney's Office? Okay, Commission comments, liaisons, events, Vice Mayor, anything from your end?
calendars the next couple, couple weeks. There's one thing, we still need that, that ADA elevator. It's going to be delivered in the next couple of days.
Okay, very good. Thank you. City attorney, anything from the city attorney's office? Okay, commission comments, liaisons, events, vice mayor, anything from your end?
Yes, I would, I'd like to give some, just some input from, about the golf club as a liaison to the golf club for your information. The, the first three months at the golf club have been, have been really exciting from the standpoint of revenue and play, and the membership is, is, is remaining very, very strong. We'll just use the number of 270, but we'll, we'll say 250 for, for regular membership. And of course, membership is, is a strong part of the backbone of, of a club, of a, of a golf, golf club that has membership. The, if, if I remember correctly, back in about 2017, we had 100, we were down to 125 members, and we're now back up. We've, that's, that's been doubled. And the, the membership does play an important part, of course. I think I mentioned this the other day, but also on the number of rounds that are played. It's interesting to note that 70% of the rounds are being played by someone else that aren't, that aren't the members there. And, and the same holds true of, of what happens with the, with, with food and the beverage, on the beverage side. So as we all know, it's very well used by organizations here within the city. And I mentioned the other day how, how our Rotary Club, 50 years of, of being at that, at, at that golf club, and, but we also have a second Rotary Club, the, the regular.
The lunchtime group.
The lunchtime group. And they have now switched over, but it goes, it goes, it goes all the way down to New World Celts who, who meet there. So DCO and, and a number of others. So that's all really good, and I, and I mentioned that it's almost, it's almost from, from birth to, to your celebration of life that occurs there. People actually have baby showers there, and they also have the celebration of lives for, for their members that are family. So it's the one place they can go that does belong to Dunedin, so it's fortunate that, that it does belong to Dunedin. And I think that's just, just a real touch of class for our community here. The work that's being done on, on it currently is, is through the efforts of the individuals that are working there and, and the existing, and the existing club management, and they've just really done a great job. And of course, now we're going to be switching over to a new group and, and even taking it to a higher level. So I think, I think that's just, just really, really great news. The, the club has, has actually going to be returning a whole lot of money to us if, if you, if, if you think about that. And if you go back to 2017, that was not the case. And so we're now talking about $300,000. So that's on top of some other, some other, some other monies that are, that are available for us. All excellent news, and, and as we get ready to step over to this change, having, having brought in this, this new facility that's, that's going to take care of our, of our golf course, pre, during, and post of, of the new facility there, pretty exciting. A lot of people are very anxious to continue to see us in some kind of an operation at the club, from what I've been told and what I've heard. And, and again, that just resonates to, to the strength of, of that golf club to us. Everybody knows about the golf club. There's an opportunity for certainly additional marketing from both the food and beverage side and then also from the course side. 50,000 rounds are going to be played. That's the current, that's the current level we're going to. And my experience from golf courses is you're pushing it. That's, you're pushing it at 50,000. 60,000 is, is tough on a golf course. So we're getting a lot of play. We're getting a lot of play at the club now, currently. People raising monies for, for organizations. A lot goes on for Dunedin there. I know our Rotary Club has, has, May, May 12, isn't it, Rob? May, May 12? I think we have a, we have an event occurring there. And people really enjoy that, and people have really liked that. So I'm real pleased with, with what they've done from the beverage and the food side, the advancements that they've made there. I think that it's very well run, from what I can see. The financials look good, and the financials of the golf course probably at a record level at this point in time. So just all positive things. I just wanted to make that broad, broad brush now as we're getting ready to make the switch. So thank you very much, Mayor, for the opportunity to talk about that liaison.
Okay, anything else?
You know, I, I wouldn't mind making a comment about two things that we were, that we were all actively involved in and represented by the commission, and, and that was Vietnam Day, March, March 29. Very well received, well received outside of our community here. We oftentimes don't like to single out different wars and things like that, but, but at times we do, and this was a national event. It's been called by the president, and we had the opportunity then to recognize the Vietnam vets. For those who were not, were not aware, and were not aware of what happened at this particular event, each individual was, was offered the opportunity to stand up and come forward to get a pin. And the line went on and on and on. So pretty incredible. I know one of the speakers talked about how, well, I happen to know how many people we had in Vietnam, but, but we had 200, 2 millions, 2,700,000 served in Vietnam, and, and the, the folks that, that were injured, et cetera, was, was quite high. You had a one, one in 10 chance of, of, of not coming, not coming back the way you went over physically. But then the emotional side. So this is all in an effort, I think, just to kind of stimulate that great for Dunedin. And we were chosen to, to, as a community within the city, within the county, to hold this event. It was really well done, really well attended, and I was, I was really, I was really pleased about that. So just want to make that mention. The, the speakers there were, were excellent, but most importantly, the Vietnam vets that were there.
Okay, thank you.
That was a little bit of a liaison.
Jeff, anything?
Oh, yeah, Mayor. But for John, thank you for mentioning that event. That was a spectacular event, quite moving. Highland Games, what a wonderful day that was. Just some really quick, down and dirty bits of data. Attendance, right now they're guessing is, and they're still tying things up, somewhere between 8,085,000, which would put down 1,500 more than last year. So attendance was strong. Successes of the day, Dunedin Middle School. Dancers, 19 medals. Pipers and drummers, five students earned six first-place medals. And that's probably where you had a drummer that played snare and tenor or something like that. But five, six medals won by five students. The pipe band, fifth place. That was tough, but we need to remember that this is a middle school. These are sixth and seventh, eighth graders going up against adult bands. So well, well done for them. The high school dancers, two first place and four seconds, 24 medals in total. 24 medals by pipes and drummers. The pipe band was third place in grade four. The city band, grade four, first place. Grade three, second place. Grade one, first place. And well done, Dunedin.
Awesome.
So it was a good day.
It was a very good day. Commissioner, any?
I don't really have anything except had a great time at Highland Games. It was awesome again, and I know their only limitation was parking. Imagine that.
Nice problem to have.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, nice problem to have. And, and also, I was just gonna, I'm glad you mentioned the Vietnam event because, I mean, that was a powerful event. And it was, it was great that it was held here in Dunedin, and it was packed. And it was, it was moving. It was really moving for all the ones that were over there and really didn't get their due. It was a great thing to have, so thanks for bringing it up.
Commissioner?
Dunedin Fine Arts Center, 43rd Annual Garden Party on Sunday, April 16. And that promises to be an absolutely wonderful event. So we all got announcements, buy your tickets, and I'll see you there. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to the Vietnam event. I, you know, have attended, you know, many, many veteran events over the years, but I, I don't, I cannot remember one that impacted at least me personally so much as that one done. It was, it did, it was so well done, and it was just, it really kind of drew the focus to where it should be, and that's, that's our veterans, and I really applaud the effort that went into that. So, and then the last thing is, is regarding the Highland Games, that was a great event, but my question is, is did the chieftain ever get his day in court?
He paid his penalty.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That was awesome, awesome. Yeah, the games were great. Unfortunately, I, I had a Terrace Development Council meeting and couldn't make the Vietnam event, but I heard it was really nice. So thank you for everybody who helped put it on, and thank you for representing us, John. Just a couple of things that I wasn't able to bring up at our last meeting because of time. So, you know, we've all been talking about the intersection. Jennifer, I've talked to you about all this, but I'll go over it with you again, maybe Monday, to get the ball rolling. But we've all talked about the intersection at the marina, Alt 19 and Main Street, and as well as speed limits on Alt 19 and the sidewalks there, you know, and, and bikes and pedestrians crossing each other. So Whit and I met with the Edgewater Drive Committee a couple of weeks ago now, but he has given recommendations, and our, our project manager was there, and so she heard everything. But the recommendation is, is that we request a feasibility study on the intersection at the marina from FDOT. If we make that request, they will do it. It's already in the Alt 19 study that we've all seen, and that we should ask to have the widening of the sidewalk on Edgewater Drive added to that feasibility study. They can cost it out, they can, you know, if, they tend to want to touch one area once. They don't want to do it five times. So that was his suggestion. At the same time, he is suggesting that we apply to Forward Pinellas, they have not done a call for applications yet, to get their transportation alternatives funding grant towards widening the sidewalk. So we have two options of getting funding to help us with that. According to, because it is a safety issue, and it has to be based on that. According to Whit, when it is a safety issue, you get additional points, and they give up to $2 million to do these projects. And, you know, that widening that sidewalk is going to be a beast of a cost. Okay? So in all that discussion at the Edgewater Drive Committee, it came up about the landscape and how, how the landscaping on Edgewater, in Edgewater Park, you know, along is, is brown, and you can't plant anything because there's no water. And so the discussion was, well, if there is, if we do get a grant, right, or if FDOT pays for the widening of the sidewalk, wouldn't it be smart to consider doing, you know, reclaim water sprinkling? Irrigation. And Vince will tell you, I think it was maybe 12 or 15 years ago, we actually had that in our budget. We took it out because something elevated more important. So doesn't mean we're going to do it. It's money. I know we're trying to scrape for every dime, but I mean, I think it would be good to at least try to understand what the cost would be so that if all of this work, the feasibility study from DOT, if they were going to do anything to that intersection in the sidewalk, you're talking five years from now. I mean, it takes a while to get through the chain. The transportation alternatives might only take two years, and that's only for the sidewalk. So it probably would be good to at least have some kind of cost estimate on the irrigation for consideration at some future time. Not saying we're going to do it. In addition, the sheriff is doing, has done a couple of studies on Alt 19 for speed. They're doing another one. It's probably already completed. I, I don't know the results of it. But we've been trying to convince FDOT to put the flashing speed feedback signs. A, they, they say if there's not a speed problem, they won't put them, and if they do put them, they're going to be temporary. So once we get that information from the Sheriff's Department, their speed study, I think we should partner with FDOT and get them to put those. And then there's a, a number of other little things I'm not going to take your time up with, but those are the big, major things that we're discussing that Whit said he will help with, but it does require some action on our part, either filling out an application or sending an email, commuting with FDOT, and et cetera. So that's it. That's all I have. Anything else from anybody? That's it for the good of the order. We will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.